Good evening. I will call the October Common Council Meeting to order. Thank you all for being here in person and those joining us via their TV at home. All members are reporting present. Thank you for being here. Item three on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand. Item four on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is attachment number one in your council packets.
Move to approve, place on file.
We have a motion by Kirkpatrick to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Worrell. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes. Item five on our agenda is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Those wishing to address the body may do so after being recognized by a council member or myself, in which you'll have five minutes to be able to speak to the body on agenda items that are in front of the council this evening. In which you'll also be invited to the podium and please introduce yourself by the name, by introducing with your name and your address. Item six on the agenda is the presentation by members of the Clean Green Action Group of an Owen Grom book to the city of Wisconsin Rapids for recognition of participating in the Bird City USA program. And if you could just push the microphone button, thank you, just so it's green.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing us to be present at your meeting this evening. My name is Mary Dom and I'm with Bird City, Wisconsin Rapids. We first earned Bird City designation in September of 2013. We will have to be renewing our status as a Bird City every year as we do for Tree City. We're part of a larger organization, Bird City, Wisconsin, and there are many Wisconsin towns and cities in the state that have gone through the process of earning the designation of a Bird City. In fact, there's eighty-seven of them to date. This summer, I was pleased to be given a copy of a book by Owen Gromy from our state coordinator, Carl Schwartz, and he asked that each of the eighty-seven cities be given a copy of this book in appreciation for the cooperation and assistance they provided in earning the designation of Bird City. So I'm very pleased to provide this to our mayor this evening. If you're not familiar with Owen Gromy, he's a world-renowned bird illustrator. He has an exhibit permanently at Le Yaki Woodson Museum up in Wausau. I would urge anybody interested in wildlife to go take advantage of that. This book is his illustrations of the birds of Wisconsin, and it's very lovely. Bird City has asked that the city donate or make available to the public this book, either in a natural center or a public library, so that the members of the community will have a chance to look at it and gain an appreciation of the wide diversity of bird life in our state. So I'm very pleased to present this to Mayor Bruin. Thank you so much for all of your assistance.
Thank you for being here.
We do have Clara Kubashak with us tonight to just give you a brief update on what we'll be doing for the next 2015 renewal, and this will really only take a few minutes, so thank you.
Thank you.
We've had a great deal of help from Dr. Kent Hall, and we have to do five steps to qualify for a high-flyer status. And he's done two of them for us. He's got webcams and he's also got a bluebird trail established here. So we're just going to use that information to apply for our program. And I've also distributed window collision sheets at three businesses. The fourth business already had collision sheets, you know, on birds hitting windows and how to prevent that from happening. So we have three of the five things done, but of course, the last two are more difficult. One of the things we are working on is the woodlot behind Lincoln High School, and we're going to have Dr. Hall meet with us next month, and he's going to help us decide whether we can make this over thirty-acre parcel into a birding site. And we've also met with the Lincoln High School Buildings and Grounds person to see if that would be acceptable, and they seem willing to cooperate with us. So we'll be doing something with that before January. There's like invasive species that have to be gotten rid of. Maybe some plantings have to be added, things, birdhouses, things of that type. And then we've contacted four of the local golf courses to see if they could do things in their golf courses, or if they already are, to promote birds, because they have a wide natural setting that can be used. Another area that is a possibility is cemeteries, because these are lands that are set aside with a great deal of shrubbery and possibility for attracting birds. So we're waiting for the golf courses to get back to us and see what we can do with that. So we're hoping for success in January to get our next step and be high-flyer. Thank you.
Clara, Mary, thank you for your help and for your efforts to ensure that we are Bird City for years to come. Council members, any questions or comments on the subject? Again, thank you for being here. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, as item seven is my report. Good evening, all the persons, staff, residents here or watching from home. As with previous months' reports, I will highlight some of the many items that cross my desk that I partake in following since, following the last council meeting. Last month, our city GIS summit and I, Chris Canty and I, attended the Code for America Summit. The event brought together individuals from around the world, representing various backgrounds and industries to find solutions to tech challenges in the government sector. The event included valuable sessions on fostering a data-driven culture within organizations, as well as applying lean concepts to government to help improve efficiencies and create a habit of innovation and performance within employees. Additionally, the summit further reinforced the value of open government in establishing a system of transparency, civic participation, and collaboration to strengthen and promote efficiency and effectiveness within government. Events such as the Code for America Summit, by bringing together technology leaders and municipal innovators from all over the country together, better establishes creative solutions to real-world problems cities like ours face on a daily basis. I look forward to sharing and implementing many of the ideas Chris and I have brought back from the summit in the near future. And if you haven't checked it out, visit GIS.WIrapids.org for the early launch of our city's GIS platform. Earlier this month, I participated in the American Bloom Symposium. The symposium was a celebration of efforts that communities have achieved in preserving local heritage, enhancing environmental aspects of their spaces, and in beautifying their city surroundings. Our community also received feedback from our visiting judges on celebrations and potential improvements by way of evaluation and recommendation that they've proposed. Wisconsin Rapids was also asked to present at the symposium as well. The presentation included an overview of our community and recent beautification efforts. This was an exciting opportunity for us, and it took the opportunity to highlight initiatives like the Hanging Flower Basket Program and similar accomplishments and struggles we've had with various beautification projects. A second focus of the AIB Symposium was on educational sessions and special programs. This included panel presentations on involving youth with beautification efforts, the value of public gardens in communities, and tree planting strategies for our communities. Partaking in these sessions and associated conversations proved to be meaningful to our efforts here. At our next Mayor's Council on Beautification meeting this Thursday, I will be sharing the feedback and recommendations received from the American Bloom Conference, and the council will discuss how the judges, the ideas in the judges' feedback can be utilized as they plan the 2015 projects. Last Thursday, the revolving, the Central Wisconsin Economic Development Funds, it's our regional revolving loan fund, held its election of officers. Jeff Zerini, who is Marathon County Board Supervisor, was elected president, and I was elected vice president. The SEWED Board consists of representatives from seven counties and ten cities in central and north-central Wisconsin. SEWED's Fund provides an excellent opportunity to support business growth in the region, fulfill the objectives of the fund, will aid in positively impacting the business climate in our region by encouraging the expansion of existing businesses and helping to attract new businesses, all leading to a growing diversity in the mix of employment opportunities in our area. Look forward to working with the newly-elected president over the coming year to ensure the continued success of SEWED's Fund in promoting economic development in our region. As we know, business activity in neighboring communities has a very positive impact on our own community. And today, I had the pleasure of participating in Career Day at Lincoln High School. I know at least one other city department participated as well. And here, we participated on panels to speak with students entering careers such as ours and exposing students to real-world examples of how we approach our positions. The maintenance and painting of the grandstand is also underway at Witter Field. Hopefully, the weather will continue to cooperate to make good progress yet this fall, and we continue to work with the rafters to discuss their off-season improvements as we move forward this fall. Fall tree plant is nearing completion as street trees return to the newly-constructed roundabout and up First Street. Trees have also been replanted in the Expressway median as of today, where trees were previously removed due to the emerald ash borer and other issues on the street trees. And lastly, with departmental budget meetings wrapped up beginning of October, I and city staff welcome any questions you have as you review the 2015 executive budget. In closing, I hope you find value in sampling what it is my weeks consist of. As a reminder, I encourage residents to subscribe to the community update online, and if you're not online, catch variations that are recorded on our CCA media or request a print version of the update from my office. Next item on our agenda is item eight, a petition and an ordinance for direct annexation of 1.158 acres of property located at 300 feet east of Thirty-second Street, north on the north side of Kingston Road from the town of Grand Rapids, which council members, attachments two, three, and four in your packet. Council members, what are your wishes regarding the petition and ordinance?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Stack to approve. Is there a second? Motion, a second by Worrell, to approve the petition and the ordinance for direct annexation. Any discussion on the petition? All the person, perky. Shane's playing a fast one on the two on the end. All right, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carries eight a's and zero n's.
Item nine is a report of the Planning Commission meeting held October 6th concerning, let me get to my pages here. A relatively short meeting. Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on Monday, October 6th in the first floor conference room of City Hall. All members were present except for Shane Burkhardt. Also attending was Adam Teagan. Excuse me, a list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. There was a motion and a second to approve the report of the September 8th Planning Commission. That motion carried. Item two is maps and plaits received. John Lamb, CSM requested, the applicant is requesting a two-lot certified survey map and the dedication of public right-of-way of property located at 3121 Eighth Street South. John Lamb was present. The CSM will create two lots from one lot. A five-foot strip will be dedicated from lots one and two for street purposes on Eighth Street South, and a four-foot strip will be dedicated from lots one and two for street purposes on Ninth Street South. There was a motion and a second to approve, and that motion carried. Item three was a life estate of Sherilyn Slinger and T. Carlson, their annexation request, in which that item was just previously disposed of by the council. There was a motion, a second to approve the request for the annexation, and that motion carried. There was a motion, a second to adjourn, and that motion carried. Council members, what are your wishes regarding the report of the Planning Commission meeting held October 6th? We have a motion by Raome. Is there a second? Second by Dolan. Any discussion on the report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Under item ten, new business, the election, item A is the election of a two-citizen members to the Ethics Board. City clerk informs we received one letter of interest from an individual wishing to be appointed to the Ethics Board. At this point, that'll remain with one vacancy. As council members, how would you like to pursue that? All the person, Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I'd make a motion to, or I guess I would nominate the individual listed for the, for one of the two vacant positions and then request that we put it out for a second.
There's been a nomination for Dan Doroshi as a member of the Ethics Board, who indicated he wishes to be here tonight, but because of an unanticipated conflict, he cannot be here. And then to put the second opening out for continued nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
No, you can cast unanimous ballot, anybody?
Motion to cast unanimous.
Motion by Kirkpatrick, second by, second by Worrell to cast unanimous ballot. Get and hit your button, please. Any discussion? Kirkpatrick, please.
Just wondering if either one of the chiefs would feel comfortable speaking on behalf of this individual, having worked with him?
Sure. Approximately January this last year, he became our chaplain, and he's done, he's done an excellent job. Perfect example is with a structure fire last month that actually involved one of our firefighters, and he did just a fabulous job in regards to it. He's, he's a wonderful individual.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Item ten under new business is item B is an ordinance regarding social hosting, which council members, attachments five and six. Chief Hoyer, did you want to speak to a little bit of the background? And we've got a nice group of students, interested individuals from the community here as well, so.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to share a lot of thought to start, except this is something in public safety that we certainly, we certainly embrace and would like to see take part in our jurisdiction to have this particular social host ordinance. And I think it'd be a much more powerful presentation, and I know if they could be recognized, we have some people that would like to speak to this, and maybe I could close after that. Are there any questions?
Anybody wish to yield some time to anybody that'd like to speak?
I'll yield.
All the person, Kirkpatrick, please come to the podium, introduce yourself, and make sure the microphone is on. The green button will light up at the base.
Hello, I'm Jordan Whipple, and I live in Rudolph, and I go to Lincoln High School.
Hello, I'm Raquel Sharpen, here. I live in Wisconsin Rapids, and I also attend Lincoln High School. With us today are Caitlin Whipple, Autumn Olson, Theodore Horst, and Alexa Gross. We are all current or former members of the East Ambassador Group. As adolescents of the Wisconsin Rapids community, both Jordan and I strongly agree with the social host ordinance. Underage drinking occurs frequently within the adolescent population. On a regular basis, we hear stories of teenage drinking. A multitude of these adolescents receive their alcoholic beverages through older siblings, parents, or other relations.
Every spring during prom season, there's always deals made between adults and kids. The adults agree to let their kids or other kids have alcohol at the residence and invite whoever they want. And they are allowed to drink as long as no one leaves. However, that's not always the case. At graduation time, it's not uncommon for adults to make deals with their teens as long as they all stay at the residence once again. We see our fellow classmates drinking and advertising alcohol every weekend on social media such as Facebook and Instagram. These stories and postings of drinking need to stop. We can stop the problem at the source by passing the social ordinance law. What adult would want to pay up to $5,000 to be in a fine for being the cool person who supplies alcohol?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All the person, Stack, please.
Just because this was only in the packet last Thursday that we as all of them received, how did this come about to be? Because at one point in time, we had a legislative committee within the council that would, items would be referred to them and then to the council. This is one of those things which I would disagree with, in that an ordinance being brought forth outside the council without any previous opportunity to discuss or provide input. That's, you know, and as for, a few years ago, the council also passed ordinance about cellphone and not driving. And I've counted four people today. It's, you know, it's still a common occurrence. And as for, as for drinking, I come back to, I come back to parents and those involved with the youth, they ought to know better. I don't know that putting something in law will necessarily curb it. If this occurred in Grand Rapids, Siegel, Rudolph, it has no, no, there's no rule that will carry this forward into those communities. And I would venture to guess that most of these, that the young ladies addressed tonight probably occur outside the city, don't they? They would be a Grand Rapids thing. I don't know, perhaps Siegel. So, two things, it comes to us unreferved, and it's asking us to take action on something that would affect only the city of Wisconsin Rapids and families within that area. So if you're just across the other side of Thirty-second Street, you're out of it. If you're on the other side of Griffith, you're out of it. Name any border street, and you can have your party there. Is that correct, young ladies?
Correct, but we're also hoping to take it to some of the other cities as well and propose the idea as well, so that way we can try and then go to the county and pitch it to the county.
Attorney Schilt, do you want to address?
Right, there is no longer a legislative committee, so a lot of things now come right to the council, and then this is the time to talk about it. And it's true, our ordinances are only for the city of Wisconsin Rapids. That's true with any other ordinance we have. We, it's up to the other municipalities to govern themselves, and this is just going to be for Wisconsin Rapids. But yeah, there's no longer a legislative committee. And there also is a rule that for an ordinance, if it's introduced for the first time, it has to come back for a second reading unless there's a unanimous approval of it. So that's kind of, so every ordinance is given two readings unless it's unanimous.
Please.
To the young ladies, have you been involved in any of these yourselves?
I have not personally, but with the amount of stories we hear, just walking through the hallway, anybody at their lockers talking about it, especially around prom season, that's where the, it's on, it goes on Facebook, and that's usually how we find out about it. And a lot of times, they try to like blur out the bottle of alcohol, but you can tell, so.
And why should there be an ordinance for this? Why not the parents and the youths being responsible? Why, why do we have to draw up a law? You might not understand where I'm coming from at all because of our generational differences, but why has to, why does there have to be a law? Why can't parents enforce those? This thing, the thing that you're talking about occurred sixty years ago too, okay? And there was no law then. So I, I don't understand, I read through the ordinance, and I see the concern that you share, but really, the concern starts in the home and the parents. And the parent that is stupid enough to host a party, they're just stupid. And if they're eliminated from the gene pool, that's fine, okay? Laws, ordinance and laws just for the sake of that is not something I understand. Thank you.
Another individual would like to speak from the audience, maybe the chief has additional comments as well. Do we want to yield some time to, Danita?
Sure.
All the person, Dolan, yields his time.
Hi, my name is Danita Carlson, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Wood County Health Department at 420 Dewey Street in Wisconsin Rapids. My home address is 11621 Eightieth Street South in Wisconsin Rapids. And the girls spoke very eloquently about how they feel about the social host ordinance, and I, with all due respect, I think it is city council's role to protect the citizens of the community. And as you talked about, other communities adopting a social host ordinance in your packet, there was information about other communities who are adopting social host ordinances. And I'm lucky enough to be able to work with the East Junior High students, and we are working together to go to municipality, to municipality, and talk to the councils there, the town boards, and also ask them to adopt a social host ordinance within their municipality. So you're right, you know, consistency is the way that we would like it to be within Wood County. Marshfield has already adopted a social host ordinance. They did that in July of 2012. And so if Wisconsin Rapids would do so, those would be the two largest communities. I already had a conversation with Grand Rapids today and taking this to the town board there. So I was just talking to the students about getting that on our schedules and then going to Grand Rapids, they would, they would be next. So I very much appreciate your concerns. I do have some information in addition to what was given in your packet that I would, I would like to read also. Drinking under the age of twenty-one is the leading public health problem in the country. Alcohol is frequently a contributing factor in the leading causes of death among youth, being accidents, homicides, and suicides, and the prelude to numerous tragedies, including sexual assault, falls, drownings, or vehicular homicide, or injury, I'm sorry. In addition, each year, studies reveal alarming evidence of long-term consequences of underage drinking. This is why it's important to address how and where youth get alcohol and what we as parents and concerned citizens can do to prevent tragedy. The issue is so important, nearly half the states in the U.S. have seen fit to enact some form of social host law. What do you suppose is the most common setting for drinking among high school seniors? It's a private home. All too often, home is also a teen source for alcohol, as the girls were talking about. An American Medical Association study of teenagers between thirteen and eighteen showed that two out of three teens said it was easy to get alcohol. One in three said it was easy to get alcohol from their own consenting parents. Two out of five said it was easy to get alcohol from a friend's parents. One in four said they'd attended a party where youth and young- One in four said they'd attended a party where youth and young adults were drinking, drinking in front of parents. And again, to address what you were talking about, some parents don't do the right thing. That's why it's so important for us to do the right thing. Access is a major factor. Research shows youth access to alcohol contributes to underage drinking. Well-meaning parents often host drinking parties on behalf of their children, either in the belief they can control the amount of alcohol a teen consumes, or because they consider teen drinking inevitable and that their supervision can ensure the safety of the children involved. Truth is, once youth or young adults start drinking and the party begins to grow in size, it can quickly spiral out of control and lead to devastating consequences, as I mentioned earlier. Hosting at home doesn't change the facts or lessen the dangers. The greatest influence on a young person's decision to begin drinking is the world they live in, which includes their family, friends, school, larger community, and society as a whole. A social host ordinance will promote a shift in community norms, which at this time supports underage drinking. The passage of an ordinance will show that our community is taking a stand and saying it is not acceptable to host underage drinking parties in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Bottom line, underage drinking is a major public health issue and cause for concern. Social host ordinances safeguard the public's health and safety by protecting public order, discouraging underage drinking, and holding individuals accountable for underage drinking. I'd like to personally thank you for allowing me this time to speak to you.
Any further questions for Danita? Anybody? Alderperson Furkey?
Hi, Danita. And I don't know if Chief Hoyer or yourself could probably answer this for me, but aren't there laws on the, on the books already for adults that serve alcohol to minors?
There, in your packet, there was information and there, what this ordinance does, it's a, it holds, holds the adults responsible for the under, for the hosting the party. And it really complements state laws against purchasing and providing alcohol to youth or young adults.
I understand that, but again, aren't there laws on the books already for an adult to serve alcohol to a minor that isn't their own child?
Chief Hoyer, do you have any?
It's addressing a bigger, broader issue in that being, you know, provided for numbers of children or underage individuals that are not their own legal child. And it's that notion of, it's really the concept around being able to host these parties as social hosts, being that best friend instead of parent and providing for many versus, you know, buying that 12-pack for one. And I think it would just give us another enforcement and education tool to address that notion of a party concept, the social concept where parents say, it's okay to have all those kids come into my house and provide this for them because I can keep them safe. It's, that's not, you know, that's not the right approach. We'd like to be able to address that, that concept.
And I understand all of that, but to me, again, I, I think that's what laws are on the books already. You're talking about having a, having a party that the adult is furnishing the alcohol. And, you know, I believe there's laws on the books already where an adult cannot serve alcohol to a minor child that is not his own.
Attorney Shild, did you want to maybe?
Right, right. Can you hear? The law basically states, right, anyone is in trouble if they purchase or procure alcohol and give it to a minor. This has nothing to do actually with procuring or purchasing alcohol, that's already contained in the state law. This is the parent who rents the hotel room for prom for the children, knowing there's going to be alcohol there no matter who buys it, or lets the kids go to their land, you know, outside the city, or if that's, if that town had an ordinance like this, and knows it's about hosting the event, being in control of a premises, whether it be a hotel room, whether it be their land, whether it be inside their house, whether that, it's hosting the event, it really doesn't even have anything to do with purchasing the alcohol. That's a separate issue. This is holding the hosts liable. If you're in control of that premises, whether you lease it, you own it, you rented the hotel room, then you're going to be liable if you're found to be knowing that alcohol was going to be consumed by underage drinkers there.
Okay, so your, are the desires to put some teeth into this, whether the adult procures the alcohol or not, as long as he has the residence or provides the opportunity or the place, whether he furnishes the alcohol or not, you just want a way to, I guess, the adult is going to be more capable of paying a fine rather than a 17-year-old? Is that kind of more where we're going?
That's, that's correct. I mean, and I think it's more, like I said, the, the hosting of the event versus who provides the alcohol. Right now, I think it's probably more difficult to determine who purchased the alcohol than it is to say, you know, whose, whose house is this? Who, you know, who rented this hotel room? Whose land is this? So, right, this is, I mean, it is, it is an extra step along the way. It's, you know, it's certainly more overreaching than actually making the purchase, but it's, it's putting it on par with, and this is an ordinance, it's not a state law, it's a, it's a civil forfeiture, no one's going to jail, it's not a crime, but it's just one tool to prevent this from happening. As, as they've stated, they feel that there's a need to have this, so. And it's, and upon my research, it certainly is very prevalent, especially in Wisconsin. Lots of cities and municipalities have this, counties are starting to have this. Ideally, this is like the smoking ordinance, this is like, well, back before the statewide ban, or the cellphone ordinance. Ideally, you'd like to see the state come up with a uniform law rather than all these municipalities doing this, but in the absence of a state law, this is something that's been requested.
Any further questions for Nita? We've got a speaking order here. All right, Nita, we'll let you sit and Alderperson Kirkpatrick, you're next on the list.
Thank you. I guess I got kind of just a couple of questions for Chief, maybe Sue, as far as they go here. First, what, what's our recourse now currently? I'm assuming we don't really have any recourse for underage parties for?
Again, it would fall back to the furnishing of, and being able to get a factual basis to do that, not always so easy.
Right, so basically, we'd be looking for who purchased it and who's consuming it, not necessarily location of where it's taking place. Okay. And this is not taking away from still handing out an underage drinking citation, or if, you know, somebody was, you know, not smart enough to cover their own tracks and lie.
Never happens.
I guess, well, no, never would happen. The, the one question I had was, reading through it here, I mean, it, it covers 23172E, covers parent, as natural adopt, any legal guardian essentially. Host, so if you go to the 2D, which would say host or allow, host or allow mean to aid, conduct, entertain, organize, supervise, control, or permit a gathering or event. And then if we go further down, 3B, a person who hosts an event or gathering does not have to be present at the event or gathering to be responsible. So I guess what's the, what's the liability on the property owner? If mom and dad go to the Caribbean for a week and junior throws a kegger?
Well, you know what, I wish, Danita and I were talking about this and when we had, and the mayor participated, but we had a town hall meeting around, you know, those who host lose the most, and one of the presenters was an insurance agent talking about liability to the homeowner.
And I guess, the question I didn't actually ask within that is, you know, parents have always said no to this, they would never say yes to this, and they come home and they're just irate that it took place to begin, I mean?
Then it's fact finding, then it's, you know, if there's no information, no factual base to, to indicate that the parents were aware of it and allowed it, then you, we don't go there.
Okay.
But it's gonna, it's gonna be an investigation with some fact finding to see if in fact they had knowledge or not.
Okay, so, I mean, and of course, this kind of stuff happens in the community, you know, there's no, no denying that whatsoever, because I mean, I was, we were all that age and we all know what happens. But sure, half of us already took part in it at one time in our lives. But, you know, I just, I just don't want individuals to think that, well, here comes this type of an ordinance and it happens and I'm out of town and, you know, I would never say yes to this, and now I'm going to get fined five grand because, because this happened. So I mean, there's, there is going to be some type of a, of a burden of proof of responsibility on your department to actually ensure that this is carried out appropriately.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I guess the, the final thing I just kind of wanted to say here was that we're, we kind of sit here in this, I don't want to say a bubble, but, you know, the stuff kind of comes to us and maybe we don't have a specific avenue for it to get here any longer like we used to, but I guess then this is that specific avenue. And I'm assuming that, you know, obviously, the chief has been in discussions helping to frame this, is that accurate?
We have been, I have been with Sue, and certainly previous to that, I think, Danita and I have been probably talking about this for a number of years.
Okay, so I mean, we've got, we've got our police department involved in this discussion ongoing over the years, our city attorney discussing this issue ongoing for a number of years. And, so I mean, if we were to present this and say, hey, we should have this kind of an ordinance, that's avenue that we'd end up taking anyways, asking these two individuals to come together, craft something, and bring it back to us, which essentially, they've already done, but in this case, it hasn't actually been sparked by any one of us, it's been sparked by some of the individuals who are most directly affected by this. It's actually being brought forward by the youth, which, I mean, we always want to get the youth more involved in their community and taking part in things, and, I mean, what finer example than something like this? I mean, maybe don't all agree with how it came about, but I mean, this is, this is really that type of action, really, we can see it for once, so.
Alderperson Stack, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. What information do you have that shows this has been effective? Results, studies, any? I read through the material that you presented, I didn't see anything that said this ordinance passed in this community resulted in this change?
I don't have the information with me. I did read material though, as I was pulling the fact sheet together, that said although the social host ordinances are fairly new, that they're seeing that they have been fairly effective. Unfortunately, with prevention, it's always very hard to determine which, which parties you've prevented because of the social host ordinance. But what we are hearing is that they are very effective and that there's a lot of communication within communities. They're talking about hosting parties and talking about underage drinking, there's a lot more conversations that are being had. So that's one of the benefits of having the social host ordinance, is we were talking about earlier about how we're going to communicate the ordinance, what information would we get out to the community, and really, starting that conversation is half the battle, and people understanding that it's really not okay to host parties for youth. And so the information again that I've been hearing is that it is very effective, again, hard to measure because you're preventing something, but again, that community conversation, the community saying it's not okay, is really half the battle right there.
Thank you.
Alderperson Raum, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, obviously, I think we're going to have another meeting on this. I think there's been, it's not going to be unanimous, but there are some questions, and I guess, the avenue, I guess, is this, to bring it this, to this, but this forum may not generate the discussion that it should. There may be too big of a rush to put some, push something through than to have a final or a discussion on it other than here, and I assume if, when it's voted down and comes back next month, that'll be, the discussion will take place there, more of what's taken place this evening. But with that, I do have a couple of questions. What does this do with weddings held in the city?
Actually, it shouldn't change that at all, because then you're talking about, we would be looking at a situation, Alderperson Raum, where parents once again are going to have to be responsible for their own children.
Okay. Follow that though, in, with the same context, at the wedding, the bride and groom are 20 years old. Obviously, it's not legal to drink, but I don't know, unless somebody's absolutely not a drinker, there is a bride and groom, I bet, that do have drinks at the wedding. One thing, and that's legal, I disagree with the age of 21, and I have consistently. I don't believe it should be that. I don't believe they should have went from what they did to, to that. But I, I, I see a problem with that, as I read, as I read it, you know, Kurt, so that's a, it goes through my mind if, that that takes place, you can just count that there's no weddings being, will be held in the city. Unless I guess, guess absolutely that they can't find somewhere else, but they're probably going to look awful hard to have it somewhere else. Five kids home from school, from college, again, 20-year-olds. All get together at my house, and I'll use that for an example, if it takes place. They're going to stay over, they're not going anywhere. But if they want to, they can't have a beer. And they're staying over, definitely staying over, nobody's leaving. That's, this, they can't do that. Another one, across the street, there's a 20-year-old leaving for deployment overseas. Buddies of one of my kids or two, couple others, they're over, they can't have a beer. I'm there to make sure they stay there, that they only have that, that they don't go driving away. Could be kids that just walked down the street that are buddies. I see problems in, I, I see the intent, I get, I get the intent. But they, I, with that total, the age of going with what the underage is of 21 is, there's problems with it. I see more probably, could be more, maybe home drinking, and an adult could be there, it doesn't get out of hand. People find out, the, the, the parent, I guess, would be the host in this case, because that's what it is, but I just, you know, and I'm not promoting 20, 19-year-olds in that to drink, 17-year-olds for, you know, 18, but I see problems in how this, the enforcement of it, and what's taken, I guess, away from a responsible adult, the parent, and that the other parents of these kids, that they said, yeah, it's okay. Even if the parents came along, I don't think it's okay, because I'd be the one hosting the event. So I don't, I, I just have problems, I have questions with it, like I started with, I'm pretty sure this is going, going to have a second reading on and more discussion, but I just wanted to bring that up, I guess, before we vote and see, see what happens, but instead of going on further this evening.
Alderperson Dolan, you're next.
Well, I flopped on and off, so I'm going to stay on this time. I want to-
Uh, I wanna, I wanna commend the group, um, I think it's great, and I do agree with Tom, I think we're gonna have to probably talk about more and that's unfortunate, um, I'm just glad my kids are over twenty-one.
Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. Um, you know, we're not gonna run weddings out of the city, it's just, we're, let's be real, we're not gonna run weddings out of the city. It's, it's illegal for a licensed individual to sell alcohol to a minor, and that's the issue. If a parent is at the wedding and they want to give their child alcohol, that is still legal. That is the parents, it's still legal.
I guess, I'm, well.
Well, the, I think the fact remains that indications from the attorney and from the police chief would indicate that that is still legal and allowed. And if you mind, I, I understand, we'll, we'll disagree with it, but, all right, um, while, while we were having the discussion here, Texans Standing Tall. Do social host ordinances work? Research indicates that social host ordinances are among the most effective and recommended ways to reduce underage and risky drinking. Thomas, written 2012. In the first national study of social host liability, such liability was found to reduce self-reported heavy episodic drinking and drinking and driving. Stout, 2000. Social host ordinances are considered a promising practice because existing evidence shows that they are effective at reducing underage drinking, although more research is needed to strengthen these findings, 2013. Communities that implement social host ordinances often describe a positive impact. For example, the San Diego Police Department reported a reduction in home prop, home party calls around the San Diego University when their social host ordinance went into effect. A briefing of the, I can't pronounce that, social host ordinance, not even gonna try. But that's, that's right off of HelpingServices.org, which brings up to that article, which has, for examples, of written studies and surveys that have been conducted around the country. And it actually had a map of different locations, different states around the country that had either statewide, county, or local ordinances. So, and as far back as 2000, it's, the wheel's not being reinvented here, we're talking about something that's fifteen years old almost at this point, if not longer, you know, depending on when some of these were put into effect. So, you know, just for what it's worth, I mean, there's, we wanted evidence, we wanted facts, and it took about two minutes to find some, so.
Seeing no future requests to speak and there's not a motion on the floor, I'll just make a quick comment, echo Alderperson Dolan, this is something that has obviously come across my office, working with the, the chief, working with the attorney on, on how do we lay, uh, raise the literacy and, and sort of the awareness of the issue. We all recognize we're not here to solve the world's problems or change the culture tomorrow, uh, but we recognize an issue and I, I, you know, commend you all for raising the, um, the kind of the awareness of the issue and recognizing that this isn't the only stop on your journey or the only war, uh, that you're gonna, or battle you're gonna fight in the war. And so I think, you know, as you continue your, your process forward, thank you for, for just bringing it to this point and, and having the confidence and the courage to do so. Alderpersons, anyone wishing to, uh, make a motion on the request, uh, in front of us this evening? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Uh, to move the conversation forward, I'll make a motion to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Kirkpatrick to approve the social, uh, or, the ordinance regarding social hosting, which is the attachments five and six, is there a second? Second by Alderperson Dolan, move into further discussion if necessary. Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five As and three Ns.
And as the city attorney alluded, that item will have to come back, like every other ordinance, for a second reading, uh, which case it likely will come back next month. Thank you all for being here, uh, the item passes this month and, uh, invite you to come back next month. Thank you. Item ten C is the, um, under new business, is the approve the formation of an ad hoc pool slash aquatics committee. Uh, council members at your seat tonight, uh, was a letter from myself, um, and my hope is that you've got a quick chance before the council meeting to read it, uh, so I won't have to read it here tonight. In essence, following the previous discussions stemming from the, uh, resolution that was passed by this body unanimously, uh, as to the relation of the, um, aquatics committee or aquatics, uh, offering in the city, public aquatics offering, indicated the interest or the willingness to pull together an ad hoc committee of the sort. And, uh, in this letter, I propose and request your approval for the creation of the ad hoc committee, which would consist of members of the council, uh, had interest from Alderperson Raum, Alderperson Dolan, Alderperson Hep, um, who also serves on the Park and Rec Commission, I'll mention that, as well as Kelly Rosecrans and Colleen Dickman, as representatives from the City's Park and Rec Commission. Uh, I am volunteering myself as chairperson, uh, and then to offer my staff support as warranted. Uh, if there were other interested council members that'd be willing to make the amendment to the request, um, if I didn't capture your interest in this. Secondly, uh, the objectives of the committee are relatively clear, uh, that they will work swiftly to quantify the existing public offering, public, uh, pool, really essentially, um,'s usage, uh, to review the recommendations by the 2012, 2016 recreational plan, um, to collaborate with community partners, and then explore the extent in which a new public aquatic facility could serve the needs of all members of the, of the public, from children to seniors. Um, and then, uh, final step to work to understand the residences', uh, residents' desires in the creation of a public aquatics facility. Um, hope is that the work will be completed, uh, by December to be able to present to the full council, um, for their discussion, uh, with a recommendation as to move this item forward. Um, as such, all meetings will be open to the public and noticed as such, uh, and, uh, will be attended by city staff as well. So, um, I open it up for your discussion, your perspective, and I, or entertain a motion to approve the request as well, so any, any of which, at this point. Alderpersons? Alderperson Raum, to approve the creation of the aquatics ad hoc committee, uh, and the seconded by Alderperson Dolan. Uh, any further discussion or any interested individuals that I didn't capture in the, uh, in the letter? The hope would be that it would come back as a form of a committee of the whole or some future discussion anyway, but it's more of, how can we pull some members of the council together to have the discussion? Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. I'm just curious, um, I mean, we've talked about this before at good length, and I think it's a worthy endeavor, I was just curious if we had any type of a, a target timeframe for whatever it is that we're seeking.
In parallel to this, but not mentioned, because it, I don't want the committee's work to get sort of stalled by that, is a state of the pool, sort of, report from city staff. And in that report, will outline that we may have only a year left of the city pool, and that's based on architectural, um, situations, its health department, there's a whole slew of things that kind of fill into the, into the picture that I think all of us just need to be aware of. So, um, Matt Heidemann and, and myself and some of his staff are working on a, uh, report that would indicate the state of the pool. And so it's, it's in parallel, and obviously it's very related to this, but I don't want the committee's work to be stalled by diving too much, no pun intended, to issues with the current pool. That's a whole nother situation that really should be addressed. This is more of a long-term, sustainable solution, uh, in which case Park and Rec or the council could address some of the pool situation as well, but this is more of a long-term, um, sort of body to have that discussion, to do some of the heavy lifting, um, that is necessary to kind of kick forth a recommendation or, or really just have the deep dive discussion, um, without having to bring it to council meetings and, and bring it through that process. Answer your question?
Sure.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll, uh, move into a vote. The motion is to rec, uh, approve the request in front of you this evening to create the pool or the aquatics ad hoc committee.
Motion carried, eight As and zero Ns.
Thank you. Item eleven is the standing council committee reports. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held October seventh. Alderperson Stack, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, to the folks at home and here in the, uh, in the council chambers, Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on, pardon me, on Tuesday, October eighth, 2014. All members were present except Alderman World, who was excused. Others who were present is on file with clerk's office. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, there were no special beer license applications. Item three, a request from Fire Captain Todd X to apply for a FM Global Fire Protection, Prevention Grant. It is moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to approve applying for the FM Global Fire Prevention Grant. Motion carried. A presentation was made by Dennis Tweedell, Chief Executive Officer of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance on Insurance Claims Procedures. This item was for information, no action taken. Item five, consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim received from Raymond Lee for damage to his residence from a sewer backup. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to deny the claim. Motion carried. Item six, consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim for Norbert Kowashak for damage to his vehicle when an overhead sign, street sign fell on it. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to deny the claim. Motion carried. Item seven, review and consider a request to approve a revision to the city investment policy. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack to approve the revisions to the city investment policy. Item eight A, review bids received for the 2014 Mead Rapids View Park railing contract and the 2014 Mead Rapids View Park cable railing contract. Item eight B, award contract to lowest qualified responsible bidder to the type of railing selected or reject all the bids. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack to reject all bids and to study this issue further. Motion carried. Item nine, a request to approve the low qualified bid for the Eastside Assessor Platte Number Fifty-Nine for the area bounded by the west right-of-way of Twelfth Street North to the north right-of-way of Franklin Street, to the east right-of-way of Fourteenth Street North, to the north right-of-way of Washington Street, to the east right-of-way of Fifteenth Street North, and to the south right-of-way of Baker Street. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to approve the low bid of Lampert, Lee and Associates for fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. See attachment one. Item ten, review and possible action on a city hall furniture equipment replacement proposal. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack to approve the quote of forty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-nine cents from MS Business Interiors for furniture replacement. See attachment two. Item eleven, 2015 budget review. This item was for information, no action was taken. Item twelve, beverage operator license applications. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to approve new, new license applications for those listed. Motion carried. Twelve B, it was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to renew a license for the person listed. Motion carried. Item twelve C, it was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to issue a license for the person listed, however, the license will not be issued until the person pays an outstanding fine to the city's municipal court office. Motion carried. Audit of the bills, number thirteen. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to pay the bills, voucher number six, 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 eight, two, nine, one, two thousand and fourteen to number six, six, nine, nine, seven, nine, thirty, two thousand and fourteen. Motion carried. Item fourteen A, in open session, a motion was made by Stack, seconded by Dolan to go into closed sections under the Wisconsin statutes. Roll call vote was taken and the motion carried with all members voting in the affirmative. Fourteen B, one, in closed session, the committee discussed negotiations regarding the purchase by the city of two real estate parcels located at three fifty First Street North and three sixty First Street North in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Item fourteen B two, discussed negotiations regarding the purchase by the city of a real estate parcel located at one ninety-five Second Street North in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Item fourteen B three, discussed negotiations regarding the sale by the city of a real estate parcel located at twenty-three thirty Sixteenth Street South in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Item fourteen B four, discussed negotiations regarding the rental of space in the Centralia Center. Fourteen C, the committee returned to open session and took the following action. One, C one, consider approval of the purchase by the city of two real estate parcels located at three fifty First Street North and three sixty First Street North in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. It is moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to approve the offer to purchase for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars with funds to come from contingency for both parcels, contingent upon environmental assessments resulting, results being satisfactory to the city. The seller pays the buyer's agency fee of four percent. Motion carried. Fourteen C two, consider approval of the purchase by the city of a real estate parcel located at one ninety-five Second Street North in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. It is moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to approve the offer to purchase for one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with funds to come from contingency for the parcel contingent upon the environmental assessment results being satisfactory to the city. Motion carried. Fourteen C three, consider approval of the sale by the city of a real estate parcel located at twenty-three thirty Sixteenth Street South in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack to approve the offer to purchase, the parcel for the purchase price to be whatever a third-party appraiser appraises a property at, with a minimum of one hundred and five thousand dollars. The buyer agrees to pay a hundred and five thousand dollars cash at closing, the rest shall be a loan at point five percent interest for thirty years, the payments made out of available cash flow. No access would be granted off of Sixteenth Street South. Item fourteen C four, consider approval of a lease agreement for the rental of space in the Centralia Center. It is moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan to approve the four-year lease, and it says commencing January first, two thousand and fifteen, it's, uh, we will amend this to be commencing April first, two thousand and fifteen. Year one, nine seventy-five a square foot or fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents annually. Year two, ten dollars a square foot or fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars annually. Year three, ten dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot or fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents annually. Year four, ten dollars and fifty cents a square foot or fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars annually. Lease rate would include utilities and light janitorial services. Additionally, the city would provide the renter with up to seventy-five hundred and fifty, fifty dollars in build-out monies for the space. Build-out would begin in late November or December, two thousand and fourteen. Item fifteen, it was moved, seconded to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at seven fourteen PM. James Stack, chairman, Terry Dolan, secretary. I move for approval of these minutes, Your Honor.
We have a motion to approve the reports, is there a second? We have a motion, uh, by Alderperson Stack, seconded by Alderperson Kellogg, and I would comment, um, you do have the ability to go into closed session to deal with items fourteen, um, items within fourteen at the end of the council meeting, should you wish to go into closed session. Uh, so unless someone objects to doing them in open session, we'll proceed with doing them in open session and, uh, go forward in that respect. Okay. No objections to going into, or staying in open session then? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if, a couple of the interested parties for item fourteen or those contained within item fourteen are present, I don't know if they've got any objections to it taking place in open session where they might wish it to be enclosed? Is there, is that appropriate or no?
Mike, do you have any, uh, any interest in?
(inaudible).
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
In that case, we'll do an open session. Um, and there's also a change on item fourteen, uh, four, C, I've got the numbers right in my head. C four, thank you. Um, on the, uh, Centralia Center lease with CW Solutions, as was mentioned, the city attorney relayed the message, uh, all of you, that there was a contest, uh, somebody in Milwaukee contested the award, so the state has held off until April first for that, so, um, if you'd entertain a friendly, a friendly So if you'd entertain a friendly amendment into the motion and second to do that, thank you. Otherwise, the terms of the lease remain the same. Okay. Any discussion on the items in front of you this evening on the reports? Any discussion? Alderman person Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. I had a chance earlier to speak with some of the interested parties here, and I just wanted to say in public that I appreciate that you folks really did, you know, take some of the concerns to heart that were brought up last time, and I really believe that you found a very good location for the project as you've brought it back. I really wish you the best, and I hope that all the funding comes through, and it really looks good. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any wish to address the body on the items before the council? Mike? Any reason? Anybody have any questions for Mike? Anybody?
I just wanted to say thanks for having us back, looking at this again. I know we were here last year, so we've been at this for a while, and excited to try to get something going here, and appreciate everyone's time. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mike? Seeing none, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
All green. Item B, Public Works Committee meeting held October 7th. Alderman person Raum, floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, October 7th, 2014, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. List of others present are filed in the Clerk's office. Item 1 was to call the meeting to order. Item 2, discuss the installation of streetlights on Rosewood Avenue at 16th Street South, 15th Place South, and 14th Place South, and whether the streetlights should be LED streetlights instead of high-pressure sodium, and the request for fiberglass poles instead of wood poles at 15th Place South and 14th Place South. Dennis Brown, a resident of the subdivision, and Todd Wyler, electrical supervisor at Water and Light, were present for this item. Todd stated that Water and Light had received the preliminary rates for the residential LED streetlight from the PSC. It is $3 to $4 a month higher than high-pressure sodium. Anticipates the rate will be lower in future years because LED streetlights use less energy than high-pressure sodium. There's a motion and a second to approve the installation of two LED streetlights on wood poles in Rosewood, on Rosewood Avenue, at its intersections with 14th Place South and 15th Place South, and to install an LED streetlight on the existing wood pole on 16th Street South. If the residents of the subdivision want fiberglass poles, they can pay for the additional cost for those poles. That motion carried. Item 3, request from Alderman person Kirkpatrick to review the city's street lighting policy. There is a motion and a second to hold this item over so that the engineering department can collaborate with Water and Light to develop a comprehensive street lighting plan. The motion carried. Item 4, request to extend the wood screen fence on the south side of East Riverview Expressway, on the east end of the existing fence at the Riverview Bridge, to 108 feet east. Tom and Chris Nowack, property owners on Riverwood Lane, were present for this item. There is a motion and a second to hold this item over until the November meeting so that cost estimates can be obtained on installing screened fences, slats in the existing fence, trees and shrubs, and to determine what contribution to the cost of the screening Water and Light would participate in. Motion carried. Item 5, revise the no parking ordinance on the south side of Gainer Avenue to allow on-street parking next to the city zoo. There's a motion and a second to approve the revision of the ordinance. The motion carried. That's Attachment 1. Item 6 was to review the proposed 2014 Public Works Project Schedule. The committee reviewed this schedule. Item 7, review the referral list. Item number 7 of 2014 on that list could be removed. Item 8, motion to adjourn. There was a motion to adjourn and a second, and the motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 4:52 PM, and without your honor, I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion by Raum and a second by Kirkpatrick to approve the reports. Move into discussion.
I'll just add, Mayor, we can vote on this, but item 4, we're going to have a little more discussion on it. So we can approve it, but we're going to go back to it.
Go back to it at the Public Works Committee meeting?
No, no, at this meeting.
So you want to hold out item 4?
You want to do it that way? We'll hold it out now.
Okay. So the report with the exception of item 4. Alderman person STACK, you're first.
Thank you. I was, I didn't get over to the area by Gainer where this item, I'm looking at item 5. No parking ordinance on the south side of Gainer. Pardon me. Is it currently such that you cannot park from the, from the zoo to 25th Avenue on the south side?
My understanding is a mistake. I asked Dave to speak to it.
We put a no parking ordinance in for marking for the bike trail, and we had, the ordinance is written all the way to the roundabout, and then the sign shop came back and informed me that there's a lot of street parking at the zoo. The bike trail actually ends at our off-street bike trail, so there's no need for no parking zone there, so we're just correcting what we had done a couple of months before.
Okay, and in the ordinance, 7D, the south side from, this is no parking, on Gainer Avenue, the south side from 17th Avenue South, which is at the roundabout, to 25th Avenue South. So you're saying that whole area cannot have parking. Is that correct? So residents on the south side of 25th Avenue could not park in front of their home.
Right. Yeah, we just adjusted it for that so you could park next to the zoo. This has been in effect for probably a couple of months now.
Right, so those folks on 25th Avenue, or excuse me, not on 25th Avenue, but on Gainer, the south side, they cannot park in front of their home. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They can park on the other side, but not on-street in front of their homes.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I didn't get over to see that. Thank you.
Plug for the bike lanes that are now on Gainer and connecting up through 25th Ave. That's part of the reason why. Not enough space on the street to accommodate both. Alderman person Dolan, please.
Yeah, more of a comment on item number 2. Dennis Brown's in my district. I've had several conversations with him, and maybe Dave can verify as well, but he has agreed to pay for those fiberglass poles.
That's right. That's what Mr. Brown stated to me, he would be willing to pay for them.
Are they going to be white or black?
I guess the color is white.
All right. Okay. Just want to make sure. Not green, right? Not green? Well, we have to have a request for green poles. All right. Any other wish, any other interested parties? I see Mr. Brown is here from Water and Light. Thanks for joining us this evening. If there's any questions by council members, I'm sure Jim would be willing to answer them as well. I see Water and Light mentioned a number of times in this report, so it's good that you're here. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. So this is on the balance of the report with the exception of item 4.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
So moved item 4, request to extend the wood screening fence. Alderman person Raum, did you want to speak to that? Or Alderman person Kellogg?
I'll turn it over to Alderman person Kellogg to start with.
Please.
This states that we wanted to get the prices for some type of protection of the noise on Riverwood Lane, and that would be in November. But if we did that and we wanted to plant trees, we wouldn't be able to beat the frost. So therefore, David met with McCade Nursery and got a price for the shrubbery that we'd be putting in there. Maybe, David, you could talk a little bit about that.
Okay, we met on-site with McCade Nursery's representative, and they recommended four-foot Black Hill, Black Hills spruce where we can, we can put them at eight-foot centers. We'd need 23 trees, and that would come to about 7, $1,725. And then we talked about adding 40 vines to climb on the fence and give more screening. They're only $9.50 each for $380. So our total is $2,105, but they didn't give me a number for shipping, so we're estimating about $2,500 to do that. If we were to extend the wood fence, we'd be looking at probably $15,000.
And you can see this picture that you have in front of you. The wood fence that you have there, it stops on the left side, and then there's no protection from the noise where trucks are braking acceleration at this intersection. And so we're requesting that these bushes be put in as a sound barrier for the neighbors that live on Riverwood Lane. And the cost would be partially funded 50% from Water and Light and 50% from the city.
Alderman person Kellogg, please. Or Kirkpatrick, sorry.
Thank you. I'm just curious about the type of tree. You said what, Black spruce? Was that correct?
That's what they recommended, Black Hills spruce. They said they stand up very nicely in an urban area with salt, and they, they grow in conical shapes so we can, will not affect the wires.
Okay, I was, that's what I was going to ask, what was the mature height of the, of the tree? Because these, the last ones we took down were like maple or oak, and they were probably well over 20, 30 feet tall. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, those are red pine that they took down, I understand. The spruce will grow to 40 feet, but we'll put them, with their conical shape, we'll put them away from the wires so they shouldn't impact them.
I got you. Okay.
Dave, does the utility have plans to bury the wires in that area?
I haven't heard of any plans.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I don't have a motion? Entertain a motion? Alderman person Kellogg?
Kellogg, please.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to purchase and install, installment of trees and plants on Riverview Bridge for $2,500 with Water and Light paying 50%.
We have a motion. Is there a motion by Kellogg? Is there a second? Second by Kirkpatrick? Any further discussion? One question for Dave. Dave, does this impact any potential wreck trail that would be installed? I'm assuming this is all going to be based on the footprint. This is on the north side of the fence, or is there a bit on the south side of the fence as well?
No, we were looking on the north side of the fence on the slope, so there wouldn't be any plans for any wreck trail that area.
Up on that side. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item 11, see the Human Resources Committee meeting. Alderman person Worrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow councilmen, viewers at home. Item 1, roll call. The, the Human Resources Committee was called to order at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, October 15th, 2014, in the third-floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present. List of others are on file. Number 2, consider a request to fill a vacant sewer machine operator position at the wastewater treatment plant. There was a motion and a second to fill the position. Motion carried. Number 3, consider a request to provide crossing guards with the same general increase that is granted to non-union employees. There was a motion and a second to give crossing guards the same wage increase as other non-union employees when increases are granted. The 2014 increase will be retroactive to the beginning of the current school year. Motion carried. Item 4, consider a request to obtain professional recruitment services. There was a motion and a second to hold this item over, hold this request over until the next Human Resources Committee meeting. That motion carried. Item 5, the committee voted to go into closed session. There was a motion and a second to go into closed session under Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.851E. A roll call vote was taken with all voting in the affirmative. Motion carried. In closed session, as noted above, the committee discussed collective bargaining, planning, and strategy. The committee adjourned in closed session. The meeting adjourned at 5:17 PM. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes and place them on file.
A motion by Worrell, seconded by Furkey to approve the reports. Move into discussion. Any discussion on the report? Alderman person Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. Just a question regarding item number 4. I know we've had some difficulty going forward with, I don't know if it's in getting individuals or if it's in hiring someone, like for the technology director, or is that the correct term, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that, is this recruitment kind of thing, is that aimed at that or more overarching or?
Defer to the HR director specifically on this one.
Yeah, the request was for professional recruitment services for that position in particular.
Okay, would, since we do have at least a couple of retirements coming up and some potential reorganization perhaps taking place, are we looking at, is the holdover to another meeting, is that maybe taking that into account as well, looking, looking longer term into those, you know, a few months out or?
No, I think the committee wanted to hold it over until the mayor could be present to discuss this issue, but Chad, you can chime in.
It was based on a money issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item 12 on our agenda this evening is miscellaneous reports. Item A is the Southwood County Airport Commission meeting held, meetings held September 11th and October 13th. Item B is the Housing Authority held August 27th. Item C is the McMillan Library Board of Trustees held September 10th. Item D is the Police and Fire Commission held September 10th. Item E, the City Treasurers Report on Investments for September. Item F, the Wastewater Treatment Commission, held October 1st. Item G, the City Treasurers Monthly Reports for August and September. Item H, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Organizational Summary for September. Item I, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Monthly Report for September. Item J, the Water Works and Lighting Commission, held August 3rd. Their Finance Committee, August 13th and September 10th, their regular meeting, and August 13th, their Personnel Committee, and September 26th, the special meeting. Item K, the Zoning Board of Appeals, held October 14th. Council members, what are your wishes regarding those reports? Alderman person STACK, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The meeting of October 13th of the Alexander Field, Southwood County Airport. Item 7, sanctioned eighth or quarter track for drag racing. Where, where does that stand?
It was an interesting request by somebody, individual thought that he had heard another airport in the Northwoods doing this and wanted to bring it forth to potentially consider for our track, or our track, our airport, we don't have a track, thankfully. Yeah, right, sorry. Yeah. He would be really happy to hear that. I'm sure the rest of the commission would be happy too. So I don't believe it's going to go anywhere, to be honest. I think the Bureau of Aeronautics is going to really frown on it. Tom was also at the meeting, and Tom, maybe you can chime in, but it was merely for, just food for thought. I don't think there was anything more than that at this point. He did hear that at some point in the near future, one of the runways will be reconstructed, and thought at that point, we could maybe christen the outgoing runway with maybe a drag race of some sort, but I'm not sure where he wants to go with it.
Thank you.
Good question. It was, it was a bit of, a bit interesting. We do. Yeah, if the commissioners aren't interesting, the, you know, we have interesting people show up to the meetings. Okay. Any discussion or motion on the reports?
Make a motion to approve and place on file.
Motion by Kirkpatrick to approve and place on file, seconded by Dolan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero Nays.
Item 13, items for new business at the November 18th council meeting. We don't have anything listed, but I would take the opportunity. I didn't do it in my report. Lee is here in the back of the room. Lee is... Lee is our new intern from UWSP. He started work a couple of weeks ago, Lee, if you want to come to the podium and just introduce yourself real quick to the council. He is working, he's hard at work with the Mayor's Youth Council and the Council on Sustainability, so both of which, he's been taking a look at some of the previous work. If you just want to introduce yourself, Lee.
Yeah, my name is Lee Jensen, I'm a senior at the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. I'm majoring in political science and public administration, minor in economics, and I've had a lot of fun working here so far, and I'm very excited to get these councils underway.
Any questions for Lee? All right, thanks for being here, Lee, and taking in what's most interesting about us, our city council meetings. Item 14, referral of communication to committees. Chad, please.
I just want to say that in the next couple of weeks here, before the November 18th council meeting, there will be another committee at the hall with a few items that I would like to address the council, so if anybody has any agenda items for the committee at the hall, please email me or Shane, and we will get some dates picked out, so we all can be there this time, please, so, thank you. Look, look for that.
Okay. Alderperson Stack, please.
Thank you, your honor. Just a note about the ordinance that was presented this evening. As staff and yourself begin to work on things like this, these little germs that come to fruition, could there be some notice to the council? We only received it, at least to the best of my knowledge, on Thursday of last week, when our packets came out, and this could have had some prior information, I think, presented to the, to the council. I don't, my, if other members feel like that, I, I would hope so. As I, as I mentioned and Sue mentioned, we did have a previously, a legislative committee that would, these items would come to, and just like the chicken ordinance a few months ago. Let's include the council on these items, just, it could be simply a heads-up that in this case, the, the group from the school had come to the city. City staff felt it was something that they would like to work on, along with Lady Carlson, Lady Carlson, and, so keep us in the loop. I just, we are the council of the city of Wisconsin Rapids. I think it's appropriate that as you and staff would like to develop plans for the city, that we be included. I appreciate the discussion we had on the changes that might take place with the city treasurer, for example, and how we do our public works. That same thing can be extended to consideration of ordinances. So if, I would urge you to do that, and find the means that as you and staff look at things that you'd like to present to the council, and not come out four days before the meeting. Thank you.
I think you raise a valid point, and the city attorney and I had a conversation about the legislative committee at one point, and learning that we used to have a legislative committee for purposes such as that, and I think that might be something the council may want to consider bringing back, because we talked about administrative code, talked about all these other issues that might warrant to have a, as-needed legislative committee meet of members of the council. And I would propose that because I think there are other issues that the city attorney may want to work on, and others that that body could, could then be working through those issues. So, you know, I echo and agree with some of your concern in that regard, you know, when a resident brings forth an idea, such as this group, and the police chief works on it, there really isn't a committee or a body to bring it through. So bringing it to the council, and that was done, I think, my understanding, the city attorney, when the legislative committee was dissolved of, that that's why the second reading was brought to the council, that those issues do come directly to the council with the purpose of a second reading for that issue. So, to your point, should you have gotten it maybe sooner? Yeah, if there was a draft created at that point, that's fair. I will agree with you in that regard.
All right, thank you, your honor.
Any other referral of communication to committees? All right. Item 15, we disposed of, disposed with previously. Item 16 is adjournment. A motion and a second, on favor? Opposed, you say adjourned. Thank you all for being here, watching us from home. Have a good evening.